We're not showing on air yet.
It's a secret. Does the on-air sign need to be on?
No, that's a special.
There it is, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is six thirty P. M. and this is the regular city council meeting of the City of Rockport City Council from May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, and I'll ask you to stand with us for the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, have a seat. First item on the agenda is Presentations for Certificate of Election to the newly-elected official for Ward One, Stephanie Rangel. Stephanie, if you'll come up, I'll give this to you and then we'll have a swearing-in for you.
That's ready for our champion judge.
Mr. Arson to swear him in today, and he's agreed to do that.
Do we have a microphone?
Judge.
Mike. Judge, just one moment. And they may want to leave in front of the TV.
All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Stephanie Rango, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
of the office of City Councilmember Ward One
Of the office of City Councilmember Ward One.
of the City of Rockport
Of the City of Rockport.
of the State of Texas
Of the State of Texas.
and will, to the best of my ability
And to the best of my ability.
preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
the Constitution and laws
The Constitution and laws.
of the United States
Of the United States.
and of this state
And of this state.
so help me God.
So help me God.
All right, congratulations.
Certificate to Councilman Ward Three, Brad Brundret. There is that. And now he will be duly sworn in or sworn out.
Sworn out, probably.
All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brad Brundret.
I, Brad Brundret.
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully execute the duties
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
of the office of City Councilmember
Of the City Councilmember.
Ward Three, the City of Rockport.
Ward Three, the City of Rockport.
of the State of Texas and will, to the best of my ability
Of the State of Texas and will, to the best of my ability.
preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
the Constitution and laws of the United States
The laws and Constitution of the United States.
and this state
And of this state.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thing we're going to do is deliberate and act on the election of a council member as Mayor Pro Tem.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh,
Yes.
if I may, I would like to nominate, uh, our Mayor Pro Tem, Andrea Hatman, again, to be our, uh, Mayor Pro Tem for the next at least year.
All right, are there other nominations? If not, I'll call for a vote, Ward One.
I'll second the motion.
Ward One?
Aye.
Ward Two?
Aye.
Ward Three?
Aye.
Ward Four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, congratulations. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Citizens to Be Heard. At this time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience from persons who have signed the speaker's card located at the table at the back of the training room of the service center and delivered to the City Secretary before the meeting begins or written comments received by four P. M. on the day of the meeting. On any agenda item or subject matter, it will be read into the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council and who have registered using the Citizen Participation Form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take any action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct, or disturbance of the peace, as prohibited by law, shall cause the chair to terminate the offender's time to speak. I have two cards. First of all, this is Citizens to Be Heard. First, Adelaide Marlot.
Good evening. I'm Adelaide Marlet and I live at four five six Augusta. That is located in the Rockport Country Club of, and this is the subdivision that I advocate for, usually for drainage. I'm here tonight just to do something briefly, and that is to get an update on the drainage plans and how we move forward with the drainage. If, if all of you have not had, uh, a look at the project that is completed, it was a beautiful job. The hole that we created there, that area is just gorgeous, and it worked pretty well this last real heavy rain that we had. There were some glitches, and Ken is going to tell you about them, but I just brought some pictures for hole number seventeen, I mean, hole number, um, pond number twenty at hole seventeen and pond ten located at the T-box, because I had been told about midway through the project that we would be, the next thing we'd do would be to clean out the ponds. And one of the things I brought along was, um, the names of some people who do spraying. The county has used one, and one is just another group that is in the Ropstown area. They're called Herman Fish Farms, but if you aren't ready to do the actual digging out like we had with eleven and twelve, you can do some spraying, and we brought, I brought that along. And I also brought a calendar. Sissy Beasley, who used to live in the subdivision, did this for us, and if you notice, when you look at it, she did not include any holes with reeds in them. That tells you something. But that's not what the problem is. The problem is, is that when you put reeds in those ponds, they don't hold the water they're supposed to, and they accumulate dirt. So please, what I would like to do is get the players again together like we did before, ma- manager, Shrona, and see if we can move forward. We had some really excellent meetings before, and I would really appreciate if we could call one of those meetings now and see if we can move forward. I'll give you this in a few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marlot. Ken Baron?
Ken Baron, I look forward to head gates, the, uh, and here for on rainy event and how it affects drainage, uh, a tenth rain event and how it affected the drainage in Tempe Club. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for implementing the project on hole eleven. That's working just the way we anticipated it should. Uh, we do have some problems in the other locations, but we know we have pinch points, hole thirteen, uh, pond splattered again, water ran over the fairway and right up to the footsteps of people on the side of the fairway. Same problem occurred at hole seventeen, it overflowed, went across the fairway and right back to the footsteps of people, put them on, uh, hole seventeen. And we know both of those have had problems in the past, and the problem is we've got the twelve, twelve-inch drain, uh, and the floodwaters, and it's just not big enough. The twenty-seven inch pipe, the waters can't dent that pipe. We need another manhole or another catch basin there. The basin of the pond, like the floodwaters, and, and rated into that twenty-seven inch pipe. Currently, that pipe is operating at twenty percent speed, uh, operated at. We also saw some problems again at, uh, hole ten overflowed. We have some minor flooding along Champions and along Kramer. And during the height of the storm, the opening, uh, on the, uh, tanky, uh, entrance box that's a forty-eight inch pipe, and the opening was operating at full capacity, the water level was right to the top of the opening. And we know that if we had more rain than we had, five or six inches, we would have much bigger flooding problem. Well, that's kind of the capacity of rain that we can handle without having major flooding problems. And that's a simple solution, too. First, uh, we just need to make the openings into that box bigger. Let out the top of it, it doesn't bleed from the top, and keep this thing opening bigger, add another opening in that box, but we just need to let the water into that forty-eight inch pipe right now. And this, these are things we talked about before, about need to help any solution. Not high cost, the issues as far as projects, the budget cost of the whole eleven project. We just need to do it before we incur another big flood. Also, we ran into a new problem, uh, which is on, behind the clubhouse. That's caused partly because builders have been building new homes
And, uh, using a lot of the existing vacant lots to build the homes, and a lot of those lots were drainage paths for floodwaters, and now they're getting plugged up by new houses being built there. And we're developing some new areas of flooding because those drainage paths are being blocked. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baron, appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda. All consent agenda items listed or considered to be routine by the City Council will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member requests so, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Do we have a request for removal of one item?
Item nine, please.
Item nine. Okay, we'll consider item nine after the rest of Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion on the Consent Agenda items ten through fifteen?
Sir, you need to read the caption for number fifteen.
I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
I have a motion. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Minus minus number ninety-seven.
I will read it.
Minus nine, sorry, that was second, yeah.
I have a motion and a second, any further question or consent? If not, I'll call for a vote, Ward One? Ward Two?
Aye.
Ward Three?
Aye.
Ward Four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Need to read into the record item number fifteen, deliberate and act on second final reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Rockport, Texas authorizing the acceptance of credit cards for payment of fees, fines, court costs, and other charges, providing for processing fee for payment of fees, fines, court costs, and other charges by credit card, providing for a service charge if a payment is not honored, providing for severability, providing a repealer clause, finding and determining that the meeting at which the ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, and establishing an effective date. Regular agenda item number sixteen, this is a postponed item from the May ninth meeting. I'm sorry.
To go back to nine?
Ha, you're right, the one we took out. Uh, item number nine, deliberate and act on approval of the City Council regular meeting minutes of May ninth, twenty twenty-three, and special meeting minutes of May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Uh, there was a correction to the minutes from the special meeting on May seventeenth. Um, Teresa's made the correction already. Um, uh, Brad Brundret and, uh, Stephanie Rangel were noted on the minutes as in attendance, um, which they were not. She, she accepted that, that change, and it's been made. Uh, just wanted to make sure that that was noted since it was incorrect in the packet.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept item number nine with the amendment on attendance.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion, second, any further question or debate? If not, Ward One?
Aye.
Ward Two?
Aye.
Ward Three?
Aye.
Ward Four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Item number sixteen, postponed as of May the ninth, twenty twenty-three. Deliberate and act on first reading of an ordinance authorizing the closing, vacating, and abandonment of a portion of Sweet Bay Avenue lying between lot number thirty-two, block number four, Denver Heights subdivision, and lot number seventeen, block seven, Denver Heights subdivision, City of Rockport, Rangis County, Texas. According to the plat recorded in volume one, page nine, Real Public Records of Rangis County, Texas, providing for the terms and conditions of such vacation and abandonment, authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed for the zero point one nine three acres or eight thousand four hundred and nineteen square feet to be closed, vacated, and abandoned, and providing for an effective date.
Eric House, this is similar to several of the other street closings, unused street closings that we've done where we split the property between the neighbors on each side. We did recently get the appraisal back on this, it was twenty-five thousand dollars, and, um, if Mrs. Pham and Mr. Elkins agree to that price, then, um, we're asking for your approval to sell it.
Are the two people in question, Jessica Pham and Mr. Elkins, are you present?
Can you come to the podium, please?
Oh.
Is Ms. Pham here?
Don't see her.
Yes, sir. You have heard that the appraisal was twenty-five thousand dollars, is that suitable with you?
That is suitable, and I have talked to Mr. Pham. We ha- we have agreed to, to split that cost
Okay.
and responded.
All right.
So if you guys approve then, when I get your check. Quitclaim deed.
Okay. Any further questions from council?
I move to approve, item sixteen is presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further question or debate? Call for a vote, Ward One?
Aye.
Ward Two?
Aye.
Ward Three?
Aye.
Ward Four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen, deliberate and act on first reading of an ordinance amending chapter twenty-two Buildings and Building Regulations, Article Nine, Permit and License Fees of the Code of Ordinances, City of Rockport, Texas, repealing all ordinances to the extent they are in conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Dietrich.
Carrie Dietrich, community planner for the City of Rockport, and this came to light because we realized that we were doing engineer reviews for plats and plans and that sort of thing, but not being reimbursed by the developers. So that was how we originally started this, this amendment. But as we started looking, we realized there were things in there that, that are no longer, they're obsolete, like licensing for electricians. We don't do that anymore, the state does all of that, so we took that out. We didn't change any of the fees currently, we just, we rewrote it so it was compliant with what we're doing. Homestead, I know there was a question about should we, um, define homestead, and that's entirely up to you. Um, the way it's worded in the code is that property owners can do repairs to their, their primary residence as evidenced by a homestead exemption. So if they have filed for homestead, it's primary residence, they can do plumbing, they can do electrical, and they don't have to be licensed contractors. But our ordinance said just to their home, which, it's not the case, so we added the word homesteaded.
Okay.
Do you, anybody feel like you need to define it?
They have a homestead exemption in the record.
It's sufficient, in my mind, but.
When I just brought it up, I mean, I, I understand what a homestead is, but I didn't know if there was
Some people don't.
different ways to interpret it, and that was the, the purpose of the question. If it's clear in your mind, and you can defend that, I, I'm good with it, but it just may be a minor opportunity to enhance that sentence to include, as, as Ms. Shrona suggested, a homestead exemption on, of, on record, if that's the right language.
I think that makes it very clear even for someone that doesn't know like me, fast. Uh, we took out some of the things that were, um, done during Harvey because they're no longer relevant. That's the, the registrant possessing their stuff and, and, um, let's see, rolling twelve month, we took that out. We, um, there was a question about waiving the, where is it? Waiving the, um, registration fee during, excuse me, during, um, hazard, during emergencies. And I think that was done, I mean, I can't speak because I wasn't here then, but because we, we did it in the city I was with, because of the, um, the hecticness and the chaos going on, and they had to have their badge with them, even though they didn't pay the registration fee, and as soon as the, um, disaster was, the declaration expired, then they had to start paying again. But I, it's up to you, I don't know if you want to keep that in there.
So I think my question, and, and maybe Mike, you can answer it, is It, it calls for, for waiving of the hundred dollar registration fee during disaster. I understand that doesn't mean that they don't have to register, but I'm, I'm curious why would we not accept that fee or require that fee when we're still doing that level of work? Now, if it's for a nonprofit, or maybe some of these other, um, entities who are trying to do good work, I get that, but these are incoming contractors who are making money in our community, why would they not pay the same registration fee that all of our other contractors had to pay to do work in our city? I, I understand expediting, I'm not, I'm not asking to hold that up, but you are asking them to register during a disaster, why do they not have to pay the fee like everybody else?
I don't know why the people raised, you know, during party, I mean, waived during party. But, you know, we, we scrambled to develop a policy where the contractors coming into town had to come in and register with us, get identification, we gave them window sticker and a badge, we tried to get the message out to all of our citizens to check for that ID to ensure that they have registered. I, I, I agree with you, I, I think we should capture that one hundred dollars as they come in and register. They're already coming in, they're here, it's a standing fee that we have, all of our local contractors, they come in every year and register and reregister, I don't see any reason why we can capture that one hundred dollars.
So, so when you look at Exhibit Eight on one ninety-six of the agenda packet, uh, this is under the section twenty-two, three, eleven, Building, Subsection A two. It doesn't indicate whether this was a, a change because of Harvey, it depends on when you guys re- revised this building code previously? Since it may have been legacy before Harvey.
It, it was revised, I believe, shortly after Harvey, and I don't know why it was revised and that was taken out, but I, I'm, I'm in full agreement that we should capture that one hundred dollars annually for any contractor that comes into the City of Rockport to do work, no matter what time it is. Time of, you know, you're ju- just time to do regular work, or time of need because of an extended emergency or something like that. They're here to make money, so.
Right, yeah, so I, I think, you know, I think removing it keeps it, um, uh, fair for our existing contractors. Um, clearly, if there's a, an issue that comes forward during the disaster that requires us to make a modification, there's a mechanism in place for us to do that, but I, I don't, if we're going to make changes to this ordinance, I think that's something that should be struck out at this point.
Okay, how about if you change that to there shall be no fee assessed for reg- for reg- for registrations for nonprofit organizations only?
I don't think they want to get into that.
No?
I think we just leave it.
Then they have to prove, yeah.
If they're registering as a contractor, they should.
You're a contractor, you need to pay the fee.
Okay.
And mo- most of the nonprofits, they're not coming in and registering as contractors, they're just in the community system.
They're hiring someone to do it, who's going to make money off of the nonprofit.
So when, when, when Hands of Hope, Hands of Hope or, uh, is any of the other organizations came in, did, did they register as contractors?
They did not register as contractors, they weren't, they were, they were coming in and they, they registered to be in our community as helpers, and they had a base of operations set up through, uh, the nonprofit coordinator during Harvey, and so if people qualified for that type of assistance, we moved them over to that group, and then they were either hooked up with Hands of Hope, uh, the Baptist men
Good Samaritans.
Cajun Army, and just several others.
Any of the groups, yeah.
And, but they also came in, when they came in to do their permits and everything else, they paid their fees also.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, and I can speak to, to all of those organizations, but in, in my role with Coast of the Disaster Recovery Group, to my knowledge, we paid for all permitting, for all projects and all communities.
Yes.
Um, and, and that was okay, it wasn't, it wasn't always easy, and it did increase the cost of those projects, but we felt that it continued to help support the community recovery and, and was worth the funding because we, we were able to get the funding, you know, different disaster may be different, so, um, again, you know, my experience, I think they should, should pay, and then if, because of the disaster, there's a special one-off, it can be discussed and considered at that time and, and a modification made.
So I, I agree that we will strike it.
A declared disaster will give us certain privileges, once the disaster is declared, we can look at those things, but it's only at the time of the declared disaster. But we're, we're setting ourselves up to ensure that, number one, we are getting everyone registered, getting them captured, if you will, and getting them into our system. That way, if there is an issue, and we had this during Harvey, where we had an issue with contractors that weren't as honest as they thought, you know, as, as they presented themselves, but the recourse that we had is we had their registration, we had their driver's license, so if homeowner came in and said X, Y, Z Roofing Company came in and, you know, I'm looking to find them because they left town with my money or whatever, we have their contact information, we can share with the citizens and such.
That's right.
And the other thing is, is they're paying the fees, they're paying the permits, and that helps us recover.
Okay, I'll take it out.
Do we need a motion for that?
Do we need a motion?
Wait, are you making a motion?
Well, no, this is the first reading.
No, you can make a motion when you're busy. Are, are you going to?
I was going to say.
Do you have anything else you wanted to say? Okay, we can pass on first reading with the, we are going to amend as directed in this reading, and by second reading, that will be amended.
Yes, sir. So I'll make the motion for, um, this item with the amendment to section twenty-two dash three-one-one, Building Subsection A, that homestead be defined as we stated earlier
Homestead exemption.
with the homestead exemption, and then A two be struck out in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further question or debate? If not, we'll call for a vote, Ward One?
Aye.
Ward Two?
Aye.
Ward Three?
Aye.
Ward Four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Item number eighteen, deliberate and act on first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Rockport, Texas, adopting an order declaring certain charter amendments and adopted pursuant to a special election held on Saturday, May sixth, twenty twenty-three, adopting an authenticated copy of the Home Rule twenty-three, adopting an authenticated copy of the Home Rule Charter for certification by the mayor, ordering the mailing of such authenticated copy of the amended City of Rockport Home Rule Charter showing the approval by the voters to the Secretary of State for file and recording said certification, providing for severability, finding and determining that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, and establishing an effective date. Any other comment? If not, we canvassed the vote, and that was approved, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve agenda item number eighteen as read.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, is there any further question or debate? If not, we'll call for a vote, Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Item nineteen, deliberate and act on acceptance of Rockport Harvey Housing LLC Pearl Point Annual Report and Approval of Rebate of Property Taxes Paid in two thousand twenty-two per the two thousand eighteen Chapter three eighty Economic Development Agreement with Rockport Harvey Housing LLC.
Mayor, Council, this is a three eighty agreement that was done, um, several years back, um, and they have submitted, first of all, when you say Pearl Point has been broken into two bases, so this is just, based to has met the conditions of the treaty agreement, so by the contract we have with them, they're due thirty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars.
All right. Any questions, council? If not, do I have a motion?
Move to approve item nineteen as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any further question or debate? We'll call for a vote, Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, unanimous. Item number twenty, deliberate, I'm sorry.
Got ahead of himself.
What was? Deliberate and act on acceptance of Gulf Coast Hardware LLC Ace Hardware Annual Report and Approval of Payment for Increase in Sales and Use Tax Paid in two thousand twenty-two per the two thousand sixteen Chapter three eighty Economic Development Agreement with Gulf Coast Hardware LLC.
And Council, this is an additional treaty agreement that was entered into obviously two thousand sixteen, um, and they have met the conditions of the contract and are owed forty percent of their sales tax due back, which is twenty-three thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-two cents.
All right, any questions, council? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve item twenty as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further question or debate? Call for vote, Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, unanimous. Item number twenty-one, boy, this is getting easy. Deliberate and act on approval of emergency purchase order for equipment to replace a failed rake system in the clarifier at the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Donahoe?
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, uh, this equipment that we're ordering, and has been ordered, will replace an existing rake system that had a cata- catastrophic failure at the wastewater treatment plant. If you remember, a few weeks ago, we came to you and we ordered some equipment to replace what we call the grit screw removal system, and there's four places, or four places within the plant during the process that helps remove the solids. When the waste gets to the wastewater treatment plant, it goes through what we call the headworks, and then we have a rotascreen, which is the, uh, it's the seagull treadmill that you see out of the wastewater treatment plant, where it begins to remove the solids, then it goes through a grit screw system, and further solids are removed, then it goes through two different processes, and then it goes into a clarifier where further solids are removed. The grit screw system is one hundred percent out of service, it went out completely, and we ordered that equipment, and it has a six to nine month lead time to get here. Okay, so we had another failure of the rake system within the clarifier, and it, it was limping along and it finally stopped, and so now we only have two spots within the plant or the treatment process that are removing solids, which is leading to, uh, an extended amount of suspended solids in our effluent discharge, which could, uh, create a problem with exceeding our permit levels. So we had to order this equipment, we ordered it on May the sixteenth, it has about a six to nine week delivery time, we have a contractor in place that when the equipment gets here, they will install it in the existing clarifier. We have another project that is scheduled to come to you in the very near future for about three point four million dollars for upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant, which will include the, the replacement of the grit screw system, and adding an additional clarifier, and repairing the rake system, and fixing the tank on the, the existing clarifiers that are already there. This just gets us limping along as we go, right now, we're running what we call the belt press, we're running it about sixteen to eighteen hours a day, and removing massive amounts of solids, and then that solid is trucked off for agricultural use, but this has already been done, uh, it, it, it's allowed by the, uh, local government code, procurement necessary to preserve or protect the public health and safety of the municipality, or procurement necessary because of unforeseen damages to public machinery, equipment, or other property. So we went ahead, sent the purchase order in, the equipment is on order, we expect to get it in the next six to eight weeks, and we already have a contractor standing by to put it in when it gets here.
Any questions, council?
I have no problem with the, uh, the, the PO going through, I mean, uh, obviously, it's a, it's a need, and thanks for not totally delving into how the sausage is made, uh, you know, in, in public record, uh, is there anything, are there any other stopgap measures, uh, between now and nine months?
We've got a previous cross, we're saying a prayer, and I will say that we've been, you know, living along for multiple years out there, I feel like we have put the wastewater treatment back together with bale wire, chewing gum, and duct tape, and we have done a real good job of having it preventative maintenance program, but we've implemented this upgrade, once it's done, we're gonna have a, what I call, a new improved plant, uh, the chemistry's gonna be a little bit different, we're adding a third clarifier to the mix, but we also are looking at a capital improvement plan that will include preventative maintenance to ensure that we have a plan to replace these things before they break out.
Council member, if we run right into a worst-case scenario, we can enter into a pumping contract.
Pump, uh, pump and, uh, I was trying to, trying to keep me getting there.
If we, if we have another failure, we would end up having contractor come in with pump trucks and removing our sludge and taking it elsewhere. That's expensive, but it is backup, and, you know, we, we, we have a plan in place, we have a contractor on standby, but we are living along, we are still well within the permit levels from TCEQ on our suspended solid discharge, and there's no environmental issues with the discharge or anything else, it's still suitable for, for, uh, irrigation, if you will, it's still safe for wildlife and fisheries, we're, we're not busting permit, we're not doing anything that's gonna get the city in trouble with TCEQ.
Okay.
But we are, like I said, limping along.
And if we, um, improvements, we'll have a lifespan repair replacement plan, so there's no more bubble gum and bale wire.
Bale wire?
Bale wire, chewing gum and duct tape.
Ma'am. That, this, the, the one, uh, that, well, I guess the two that we've already purchased, uh, those will, uh, those will work with the expansion of?
The grit screw equipment will align with the, the contract when that equipment gets here, that's a six to nine month lead time on getting that equipment here, so when that equipment gets here, that'll be part of the process for the three point four million dollars.
Roger that.
With the rake system that we just ordered, when the, uh, project takes, takes place and we start moving forward, we've got two options, we can leave the, the newest existing rake in the clarifier, or as part of the project, we can replace the rake and take this rake out and put it in storage and have one in backup, and that's what we're, that's what we like to do, but we're gonna be monitoring the budget as we go and everything else to ensure that, uh, we're spending our money wisely, but it's always good to have spare parts.
Understand.
Okay.
No further questions?
Any other questions?
So Vanessa, the one twenty-five, almost one hundred and twenty-six thousand, we're absorbing that into the existing budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve emergency purchase order?
I'll make the motion for item twenty-one as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further question? If not, we'll call for a vote, Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, unanimous. Item number twenty-two, city manager report.
Don't have anything that you're bothered to say.
Very good. Reports from council. Have anything new already that you would like to talk about?
Uh, no, I was looking forward to filling this position and working with the council, so I just thank everybody for all the support I've received.
Thank you, appreciate it, we're well working with you.
Any?
I almost always have something, but I really don't, the last two weeks, we've not had any new activity in Ward two, um, with the exception of, uh, I've had a couple constituents that have reached out, um, updates on, on flooding or, or water behavior in their community as, uh, construction, um, has commenced, and just kind of following the water and making sure that it behaves the way it is, so I appreciate those that reached out, um, we've also had, um, had some calls on some code enforcement concerns, and, um, those have been turned over to Vanessa for, for follow-up, and I appreciate that, other than that, welcome to the team here.
Thank you.
And I look forward to working with you.
Ma'am.
Brad?
Uh, I returned from the TML Leadership Academy, uh, this week, and I would say that was a, uh, a, a very fun and worthwhile academy to attend, uh, got to make a lot of contacts from, from the Panhandle, to West Texas, to East Texas, down to South Texas, it was, uh, no matter what part of the state you're in, everybody's got the same problems. Maybe, maybe West Texas doesn't have drainage problems, but, cause it, cause it doesn't rain, but, but anyway.
It blows away.
Yeah, just, the, the wind moves it, uh, but anyway, it was a, it was a really good academy, uh, uh, training session to attend, and, uh, I want to thank the city for allowing me to attend, uh, we have, um, I think some good news on, uh, the GLO drainage projects, uh, I hope to start seeing some equipment, uh, coming very soon, uh, I know, uh, a lot of people in Ward three are very anxious and excited to see that happen, um, and so we look forward to that, uh, hopefully it's, uh, a worthwhile project, and fingers crossed, knock on wood and everything, that it, it goes smoothly, smoother this time. Has to. That's all I have, ma'am, thank you.
We'll win the challenge.
Ward one, Andrew?
Um, I guess I'll just, we'll start off in saying thank you to, uh, Ken, Barry, and Natalie for coming out today, you're my wards, so I appreciate your comments, and, um, we will continue working on what we can do to better the drainage in our area, um, one project is done, so now we can start looking forward to the new ones. Um, on top of that, I did attend the, uh, TML Small Conference, uh, a couple weeks back, I believe, and that was good information, and that's just for towns that are growing, and all small towns in Texas are growing right now, so just giving you a little bit of a better outlook and how to navigate it, and the way you want to navigate it, and the location that you're in, and that was a lot of good information. Um, I guess the only other thing is, uh, kids are gonna be out of school this week, we have seniors graduating, I have to put a plug into my daughter, she's graduating, class of two thousand twenty-three, so very proud of her, and we just have to, uh, congratulate all the other seniors out here that are gonna go out into the world and better it for us, so let's give them all a lot of kudos.
I think Stephanie has a son that's graduating.
I do? Yes, yeah, well, congratulations to your son. And I think that's it.
The thing I've got, the regular council meeting scheduled for June the thirteenth has been rescheduled for Wednesday, June the fourteenth, so the council meeting in two weeks will be on the fourteenth of June. Anything else for? Next, city council will hold an executive session pursuant to provisions of chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in section five five one point zero seven one, consultations with attorneys seeking the advice of attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or a settlement offer, known a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under Texas disciplinary rules and professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with its chapter, Concho Street General Land Office GLO Drainage Projects. It is seven thirteen, and we are in executive session. Just said, all that doesn't matter anymore, I, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Nope.
So a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn, we are adjourned, it's seven fourteen.